I warned you. We're gonna, it's been testing out fine here, so I don't know.
Has it? Okay, good.
We'll move it back next to me.
Yeah, don't worry about it.
I don't know why you're.
I don't even know what the button's doing.
I couldn't turn somebody off.
Are we doing a 1028 first?
Yeah.
Is there a question?
Good evening. Welcome to the July 26, 2022 Michigan City Area Schools Board of Trustees meeting, or our 1028 public hearing. Now can we stand for the pledge?
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation and liberty in justice.
The mission of the Michigan City Area Schools, the unifying force of our diverse community, is to ensure that each student will be able to achieve any goal to which he or she aspires and contribute positively to society through a system characterized by: Learning is a continuous experience of excitement, opportunity, and achievement; clear goals and high expectations for student success; supportive families and community; staff with pride and purpose leading by positive example; and a student prepared for and enthusiastic about his or her future.
Thank you. Mrs. Painter, could you record the role as all members present except for Mrs. Rose?
Mr. President, go ahead. This is gonna be the 1028 hearing. Is Mr. Shanahan and Baker Tilly available?
I am.
This is Jason Tansel with Baker Tilly. We are available, yes.
Okay, I think they will have a presentation, and then after the presentation, we can offer a public hearing for the public to give their input.
Okay, thank you.
Jimmy, I can start with the financial information if you're okay with that.
Sure, I'll just give a quick overview of the purpose, and then you can give them the stuff that everyone's really interested in. Under Indiana law, we're supposed to have a public hearing if we're gonna propose a project that's in excess of $1 million. And the purpose of that hearing is to provide information about the project and provide the board and the public a chance to ask and answer questions and give any feedback. And then following the close of the hearing, you'll have a couple of resolutions for your consideration, one being the 1028 project resolution, which sets forth the parameters of the financing cost and the expected interest costs and some other details. And then you'll have a bond resolution, which approves the issuance of the bonds, and then an appropriation resolution, which approves the spending of the proceeds for accounting purposes. So pretty similar to the last several GOs we've done over the last several years, but wanted to give that quick overview. And then now Jason has prepared some financial information about the impact, and I think you'll also hear some info about proposed projects tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Shanahan. And before we get started, I do have a presentation that I could share on my screen. I wasn't certain, I don't have the capability to share my screen. It's telling me on Zoom, but if it's easily accessible to the board, I'm okay not sharing my screen for the six-page presentation we have to review the financing information. So I can do whichever way the board would like me to proceed.
Yeah, I don't think they have any. Jason, I will share the presentation, and before we do that, just a little bit about the project itself for the community and for the board members. And Jason, this is Kevin. I don't know if you can see me in the camera, so good to see you on your screen here. Good evening, everybody. Just a quick follow-up and updates. If you recall, back on May 31st board meeting, the board approved the purchase of the Brown Mackey Building. So the finances and everything that you'll hear tonight is in regards to that project, moving both the purchase of the building as well as construction costs for the building. And for the community, the finances that you're here are in regard to an update for the Brown Mackey Building, which consists of some classroom updates for a pre-K center as well as vocational center, to update classrooms and bring really the vocational program into the 21st century. This will replace some of the programming that we do have at the vocational building. And just some comparison numbers for you. A while back, I want to say back 2016, 2017-ish, we looked at what the updates would cost us at the vocational center. We've recently had some conversations with performance services as well. We were looking at at least a $20 million project to update the center, the current vocational center, to bring it into the 21st century and really give our students what they deserve. The Brown Mackey Project certainly replaces some of those costs and offsets some of those costs from the district to not updating that building. And it is essentially tax neutral to all of our taxpayers in that the tax increase won't go up for our community members. So with that, give me two seconds, because I do have the presentation that Jason's referring to, so we'll share it out. One second.
Perfect. Thank you, Kevin. And while Kevin gets that presentation ready to share, just wanted to say thank you to the board for allowing me to present tonight. As Mr. Shanahan and Mr. McGuire mentioned, Jason Tansel with Baker Tilly. And now that we've had an opportunity to hear a little bit about the project, as your municipal advisor, I will now review the financing information and some of the characteristics within the resolutions before you this evening for your consideration. The, it's important to keep in mind that within the resolutions tonight, we are establishing maximums, and these are maximums that we cannot exceed, but we can come down from. And these maximums would include the borrowing amount, the repayment term, and interest rate. And so the project being discussed here tonight would be funded through a general obligation bond that the school corporation would issue in a maximum amount of $5,815,000. And this general obligation bond would be repaid through its debt service fund, which levies a tax. But as Mr. McGuire mentioned, this will be able to be issued in a tax-neutral way, so not increasing the already existing debt service tax rate of the school corporation. So with that, we will go to slide two of the presentation. So on slide two, we have a schedule of the school corporations' already outstanding bonds that are payable through the debt service fund.
Jason, one second before we, sorry to interrupt. We're just having an issue getting it pulled up on the screen. We're gonna give you sharing permissions. We have some, probably not the best time to share this, but we have some new video updating within the room, so we're working through that. So you should have sharing permissions and be able to share that on your screen. There we go. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. If you can see my screen, unfortunately, I muted myself there. I apologize. But if you can see my screen, I think I can see it on the monitor here. This is a schedule that has the school corporations' already outstanding bond issues that are payable through the debt service fund, and it has these in total annual payments for each bond. So here you can see each individual bond is listed, all the way from the first mortgage bond, Series 2002, through the general obligation bonds that were issued last year, as well as the refunding bonds that were issued last year. And we've broken down each bond's individual annual payments, but really I want to draw your attention to the far-right column, which is the total amount of all bonds' annual payments. And you can see in 2022, the annual payments are approximately $12.5 million, and that in 2023 and thereafter, those total annual payments are decreasing as bonds mature or retire. And the, this existing debt service structure is what will allow the school corporation to be able to potentially bring on a general obligation bond for this project and not increasing the annual payments, but instead just potentially replacing some of these payments as they retire. But to the extent that you were to see a declining debt service payment structure, all else equal, like things like assessed value, the tax rate would also decline with those annual payments. So the school corporation has the flexibility to potentially pursue this project if it so chooses. I do want to also point out that all debt is repaid by 2026, and this is rapid amortization in the sense that the school corporation in five years would not have any other bonds potentially outstanding. And so really, the school corporation has quite a bit of flexibility in the future and has opportunities in front of it, should it pursue any capital projects within the debt service fund.
Jason, can you enlarge that?
Sure. And I'm going to actually go to the next page, because it would potentially, a graph, it might be a little bit easier as far as you can really see the declining debt service payments of all bonds outstanding. So is that a little bit easier to see, Kevin?
Yes, thanks.
Okay. Here, each individual bond is represented with its own color, but really just want, again, to draw your attention to the total, where here in 2022, you can see those total annual payments of $12.5 million, declining in 2023, and all debt repaid by 2026. And so it's this declining annual debt service structure that is allowing the school corporation the flexibility to potentially issue these bonds without an increase to the debt service tax rate. The bonds being considered tonight are general obligation bonds, and by law, there is a limitation as to how much school corporation could issue for general obligation debt. And this limitation is 2% of 1/3 of the most recent certified NSS value, which you can see for Michigan City is over $3 billion in 2022. We also must factor in the already outstanding general obligation debt of the school corporation before this issuance. And so there you can see that over $9 million of general obligation bonds are outstanding as of today, but that this leaves approximately $11.3 million to be issued for general obligation bonds. And the $5,815,000 bond being discussed tonight fits well within that $11.3 million. Slide five is a summary of the financial information that is within the board packets' resolutions tonight for your consideration. As we've discussed here, the maximum borrowing amount is $5,815,000, and we are currently estimating a repayment term of just over five years. But within those resolutions tonight, there is the flexibility to have a maximum repayment term of nine years, but that is for flexibility purposes. Right now, we are just currently assuming that five-year repayment term. Of the $5,815,000 of the borrowing, we would estimate $5,585,000 being available for the project after bond issuance costs. Currently estimating interest expense of $1,427,000. And we do have an estimate for the maximum annual payment and the tax rate associated with that, which you can see is one annual payment in 2027 of just over $5.3 million, and that the tax rate associated with that is 16.68 cents. But currently, the school corporation's current debt service tax rate is over 39 cents, so, again, not increasing the debt service tax rate above that 39 cent level. And our final slide here is another visual that really illustrates the point. The bar chart represents the total annual payments that you've already seen on slides two and three in gray. So again, $12.5 million of payments this year, decreasing every single year, with all debt being repaid by 2026. The green bars represent the proposed structure of the $5,815,000 being considered here tonight. And again, you can see those total annual payments are not increasing above $12.5 million, but that the line chart here, looking at the other axis on the graph, is an estimate of the school corporation's debt service tax rate. And here you can see that, again, we are not estimating an increase to the debt service tax rate, but rather having that, keeping that tax rate level at the 39 cent level, and then preserving that flexibility in the future, where we would currently be estimating that tax rate to fall every single year with those declining debt service payments. So again, in summation, the school corporation would be able to issue the $5,815,000 for the project being considered tonight, and it currently do not estimate an increase to the debt service tax rate for the school corporation. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Any question for any board members?
If there aren't any questions from the board for either your financial advisor, Baker Tilly, or for your bond counsel, Jimmy Shanahan, then I would ask the president to open this up for a public hearing for anybody who has any input regarding the bond.
No one for public hearing? Any input? Any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment?
Mr. President, seeing no public comment, I would ask the board to consider the three resolutions that are in front of you.
What's the pleasure of the board?
So moved.
Are we doing them all at once?
Yes. We can do them all at once, great.
You need to make sure that the public understands what you're voting on, so you can read that by name.
Yes, I will. Let's see, so, we will be, so, the motion we're seeking is for the 1028 project resolution, the bond resolution, and additional appropriation resolution.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any additional comment or statements? Seeing no additional comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Mrs. Painter, that passes. It's with all members voting aye. Thank you.
Mr. President, you can close the 1028 hearing portion of this agenda. Thank you to Mr. Shanahan and Mr. Tansel for their time, and you two are free to go. And then you can start your regular meeting, Mr. President.
Thank you. We will adjourn the public hearing meeting, and we will go into our regular, our, regular.
Thank you very much.
Give me one second for my agenda to come up, please. All right, we will forego the pledge allegiance and admission statement, and roll call is still the same. Going to the consent agenda. Number one, I'm sorry, actually, a public comment, right?
Yes.
At this time, we will take any public comment. Hold on, let me read my statement, please. Please limit your comments to three minutes. There will be no direct interaction with the board, discussion of personnel issues, or direct or indirect verbal attacks of staff or the administration. And please state your name and address.
This is Tommy Kalavich from 1316 Ohio Street. First, I want to apologize for my absence. This is the first school board meeting I've attended since 2015. I've been busy mentoring. They turned out real well. First thing I want to talk about, three extraordinary individuals. Last Monday at the Michigan City Board of Works meeting, the Board of Works, they approved the approval of honorary street sign. There's gonna be an honorary street sign outside the, on Michigan Boulevard, outside West Scott Park. It's gonna be in honor of Coach Bear Falls. It's gonna say, "Coach Bear Falls Way." Everybody knew Bear. He touched every one of our lives. He's one of the greatest men I've ever known in my life. He was more than a coach, or a teacher, administrator. To most of the students, especially the players that he coached, he was more like their dad. You know, he was just one of those kind of type of people that made your life better just by knowing him. We need more guys like Bear in this world. It'd be a much better place. Secondly, a few years ago, the county started a program where they're gonna dedicate bridges after special individuals, you know, extraordinary individuals in the county. A few weeks ago, at their commission meeting, they approved two bridges for two extraordinary Michigan City people. One is somebody who's synonymous with Michigan City, in the Michigan City Area Schools. The bridge on Springland Avenue that spans over Trail Creek, that's gonna be dedicated as the Yow-Whitlow Memorial Bridge. You know, he was just a pillar in our committee. He's been described as the moral compass. Another is for a gentleman, he's, he was a brave soldier, Sergeant Robert Burkholtz. He graduated from Michigan City Elston High School in 1966. The bridge over the Green River on 1,000 North, that's gonna be named in Sergeant Burkholtz's honor. He was, went over, got drafted into Vietnam, was only there for a couple of short months and paid the ultimate sacrifice. Secondly, I want to complain about a couple of things. There's a sign on Michigan Boulevard that's on the side of the former Petty's Grocery Store. It advertises free GED classes. There's a local number, an extension. When you call the number, you get the voicemail for the AK Smith. That sign has been up there for a very long time. You know, Mr. Petty passed away, his stores closed. This sign is very dilapidated, unsightly looking. It really needs to be replaced, or removed, or placed somewhere else. I'd like to see that done. It kind of adds to the blight of the community. Secondly, I'm gonna bring this up, because I just read a story that the Gary School Corporation just recently completed the demolition of the former Gary Lou Wallace High School. It's on 45th Avenue in the city's Glen Park neighborhood. I'm sure a lot of people are familiar with that. I want to refer what I consider a brownfield site out on County Road 350 East. It's the former Pine Elementary School. What I'd like to do at this time is I'd like to read a statue. It's about vacant structures in Indiana. I've actually heard our previous city attorney, John Espa, read this at Board of Works meeting when they were discussing it. It's what was commonly known as the Ice Dream Parlor. And I thought it was a very powerful piece of legislation, and I'd like to, and when he read it, it really stuck with me, and I hope this sticks with you too. What this is, it's Indiana Code 36-7-9-4.5, Local Government. In Indiana, especially in urban areas, there exists a large number of unoccupied structures that are not maintained and constitute a hazard to public health, safety, and welfare. Vacant structures often become dilapidated because the structures are not maintained or repaired by the persons in control of the structures. Vacant structures attract children, become harbors for vermin, serve as temporary abodes for vagrants and criminals, and are likely to be damaged by vandals or set ablaze by arsonists. Unkept grounds surrounding vacant structures invite dumping of garbage, trash, and other debris. Many vacant structures are situated on narrow city lots, in close proximity to neighboring structures, thereby increasing the risk of conflagration and spread of insect roten infestation. Vacant deteriorating structures contribute to blight, causing decrease in property values, and discourage neighbors from making improvements to their properties. Structures that remain boarded up for an extended period of time also exert a blighting influence, and contribute to the decline of the neighborhood by decreasing property values, discouraging persons from moving into the neighborhood, encouraging persons to move out of the neighborhood. Vacant structures often contribute, often deteriorate to the point of that demolition of the structure is required, thereby decreasing available housing in a community and further contributing to the decline of the neighborhood. Blighting influence of vacant structures adversely affects the tax revenues of local government. The General Assembly finds vacant structures cause a serious and substantial problem in urban areas and are public nuisances. In recognition of the problems created in a community by vacant structures, the General Assembly finds that vigorous and disciplined action should be taken to ensure proper maintenance and repair of vacant structures, and encourages local government bodies to adopt maintenance and repair standards appropriate for the community in accordance with this chapter and statutes. With that being said, I'd conclude my public comment for tonight. I want to wish you all a very pleasant good evening. Peace be with you. Go Wolves, and I am Len O'Connor. Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Any other public comment?
I just, I don't generally respond to public comment, but the board is well aware that schools are under a different statute, that we can't just sell a school. We would love to be able to do that. We have to do many things, including with the Department of Education. We have to look, watch for statute regarding charter schools. There's all kinds of loops that we have to jump through that individual owners in the city do not have to jump through. We would love to sell that. We've listed it with a broker, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kaminsky. Any other public comment? Seeing no public comment, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Number one, approval of the minutes of the preceding meeting on June 28, 2022. Approval of employee appointment. So I guess before I go any further, one of our board members needs to, we need to vote. Can we vote separately? I need to leave one out to vote. So can I list the ones I want to get a motion for?
I'd like to have one pulled out. That's no problem. You can vote on the rest, and then you can act on the individual one later.
Okay. So number one, I just read off, then include number three, approval of secretary's report on bills to be paid. Number four, approval of pay dates, July 1, 2022, and July 15, 2022. Number five, travel reimbursement. And number six, the administration requests permission to staff vacancies required beginning the 2022, 2023 school year pending board approval.
I have a question about number six. I've just never seen that before, and I'm not clear why that's in there.
That's an annual request that we make, because we have vacancies leading up to the start of the school year next week. And so each year, we give principals the ability to hire employees for those vacant positions, as well as departments, so that hopefully we'll be fully staffed to start the school year.
Okay.
How would the board like to proceed with those?
So, did we pull one of these out?
Number two, I didn't read number two yet.
Number two, I'm sorry. Okay, I didn't follow that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Painter, that passes with all board members voting aye. And now for number two, approval of employee appointments, resignations, retirements, lease absences, and status change. How would the board like to proceed?
Love to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. President, I need to recute myself in the vote undecided side.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Painter, that passes with board members voting aye, and Mr. Demkonski recusing himself. Thank you. On to Communications Superintendent, Dr. Barbison Hawkins?
The citywide back-to-school rally will take place this Saturday, July 30, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Elston's Gill Field. Again, this year, the event will feature a backpack giveaway, free food, activities, exhibits, and COVID vaccines. We are grateful to our title sponsors, including American Licorice, Franciscan, Comcast, Sodexo, Meyer, and the Indiana Toro. The Michigan City Area Schools is once again seeking high dosage tutors to help stem the learning loss that many students have suffered due to the pandemic. Tutors work with between one to four students at a school for an hour or so a day, two to three days per week. The schedule is flexible, and this is a perfect opportunity for retirees, college students, or even business professionals who may want to work during a lunch break or off hours. Retired teachers receive their last hourly wage, with others receiving $15 per hour. More information is available at educatemc.net/highdosage. All students should now be registered for the 2223 school year. Those who still need to register are encouraged to do so as soon as possible. Registration takes place online using the Power School Parent Portal. Anyone need using the Power School Parent Portal. Anyone needing assistance with registration or enrollment should contact their school. The Connections newsletter has been mailed to all postal customers in Michigan City, Beverly Shores, and surrounding addresses. We appreciate the sponsorship of the Michigan City Chamber of Commerce in helping us to fund this project and tell our good news. The newsletter is also available online on the district website at educatemc.net. We are grateful to the Chamber's Lakefront Career Network for once again hosting this year's new teacher luncheon, which will be held on August 4. We appreciate the partnership of the many corporate sponsors who are supporting this event and our teachers this year. The first day of school for all Michigan City Area School students is Wednesday, August 10. Freshman orientation at Michigan City High School will take place on Friday, August 5, from 7:00 a.m. to noon. A one-page version of the 2223 School View calendar is available on the Michigan City Area Schools website at http/educatemc.net. Again, http/educatemc.net under our district. And now the highlight of today's announcements. I would like to conclude by congratulating a person I would like to have come forward, and that is Dory Wigan. Dory was recognized recently as a nominee for School Food Service Employee of the Year by the Indiana Department of Education. Dory was nominated for this honor by the principal and several staff members at Nap Elementary, where she is a food service tech, and she was presented with a framed certificate of recognition earlier this summer. Dory has been a food service employee for 23 years, and prior to that, she worked for our Safe Harbor After-School Program for nine years. We know that Dory consistently goes above and beyond in all that she does, and feeding our students is her true passion. She's been here before, if you recall, and we have recognized her for the tender, loving care that she provides. Our food service director, Nicole Santana, reports that she was an employee who truly stepped up during the COVID-19 pandemic, when the food service team was preparing and servicing packaged meals. In fact, during the 2020-21 school year, she did not miss a single day of work. So she is one of our heroes, and I would like for you to join me, and we all stand, and give her a big round of applause. We congratulate you, and we thank you for all that you have done, and I know you will continue to do on behalf of our students. And I don't know, Nicole, if you'd like to have a few words, or, you know, Dory, if you'd like to share some things as well. We are just extremely proud of you.
Thank you.
Very proud of you and all that you do.
I was going to say, you do have the floor, Dory. Dr. Watkins said most of it, but I, there are not enough words to talk about Dory and what she means to our department. It's not easy these days, and we all know that there's challenges in our daily lives, and COVID's brought so much more to our daily lives. But Dory shows up every day with a smile. The kids know her. I walked in this parade with her this year, and we couldn't get down the block. I mean, Miss Dory everywhere. So it just goes to show, I mean, these students, you're one that they're going to remember, and I'm sure see you in grocery stores for years down the road. But I appreciate you and value you so much. Thank you.
And before you leave, if we could have those of you in the audience come forward. I know that you are here because you care and love her so much.
Dory's family.
That we take a part of.
Part of her family's here.
The family, hello.
Come on, family. If you could come up as well, thank you for having the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Friends and family?
Yes.
Yes, friends and family.
Everyone here supporting Dory. Thank you. That's a huge cheer.
This is one of the largest groups we've stayed in a long time. Thank you.
I want to make sure.
Thank you. That's a lot to retire. She won't do that. Not yet.
That wonderful announcement concludes today's sharing of wonderful information about a just phenomenal employee.
You may have mentioned it, but the tutors that you're looking for, how do they contact you, or what do they reach out to?
Kathy Buildhauser.
Okay. And at your email, is it, and what is your email?
Email's perfect. I've been receiving phone calls as well. So either, either method?
Okay, cbuildhauser@.
And it's on our homepage, too.
Great, great.
Because we want to ensure that.
Oh, good. Great.
That's easy for IBS as well.
Oh, actual flyers. Excellent. Okay.
Flyer package.
I didn't see it on there. Oh, yeah, I bet it. Okay, I didn't open that file. Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Watkins. Congratulations again, ma'am.
Thank you.
Marty got to work with Dory.
I did. Oh, yeah. So when I was school resource officer, I made sure I knew where the cafeteria was.
Yeah, yep. Then I was at, yep, I was at. Yep, I was at Nap School, yep.
Any board statements or issues requiring action prior to the next statement? Any board members want to say anything before the next board meeting, before we adjourn? Any board members? No?
I do have a question.
Yeah.
I'm wondering about our employment levels and how we're doing, and I know that there's just shortages all over the state for teaching staff, and I'm wondering how we're doing.
We still have some openings, like all the other districts across the state and in our area. So I mean, we are looking at filling them. applicants are still coming in. We're looking at other avenues. We've been promoting with the help of communications on LinkedIn and other things. So we're looking at a lot of other avenues, too, to promote our jobs. So we're still, we're still going forward.
Okay, okay. I mean, so I mean, are we confident that we'll be fully staffed?
I don't know if we'll be fully staffed. So I mean, but we are aware of those openings, and we're looking at how we're going to manage those once we start school.
All right, great. Thank you.
And just as a follow-up to your previous question, we do bring all of the names of employees who've hired after the board meeting back to the next board meeting so that it will be a ratification, but board members will have an opportunity to employ, to approve all employees that are hired.
Any other board members? Before we go, I'd just like to say, if you come into the back-to-school rally, get there early, because Dr. McCullough will be in the dunk tank. Let's see. We're not talking about me. We're talking about Dr. McCullough right now. Yeah, I'll be right after Dr. McCullough. Get it over early, when the water's still warm and clean.
Is that what that truckload of ice was all about?
Exactly. Seeing, anybody else have any statements? Anybody from the cabinet? Dr. McCullough, do you have anything? Dr. Watkins, have anything else? All right. We'll be adjourned. See you all next month.